What official channels that will come through, but the sheriff told me that would come through some official channels. And I don't know if that comes to the mayor or Charlene or I get a lot, I don't know. But anyway, that's coming. And again, directly from the sheriff to me, our driving scheme is doing really well. I've been extremely pleased with that. It gives the court an extra option. It gives police officers an extra option. We have an officer trained to do it. The expense is minimal, very minimal. We do it here in this building. So we don't have to, there's no cost really. They do it downstairs. And Officer Hall teaches it. The people that have had it have commented to me that it's been good. It's been educational. It helps their driving record in a lot of cases. So that's, that's been a really good thing and I'm glad we instituted that here instead of continuing to run through a third party provider. Next court will be September the 12th. No, we have a court in August, the second court date in August. So anyway, but anyway, and then Lisa's got some training coming up and I have in November. So that's, that's coming, but not a whole lot to say. The main thing that concerns me is that the jail cost is increasing. There's nothing we can do about it. We can attempt to minimize jail days, but sometimes it's just inevitable. If you issue a warrant, somebody gets picked up and sometimes they cannot make bonds and they're just there and there's not much we can do about it. So we'll have to deal with that and see how it plays out ongoing. And I'll, I'll talk about that a little bit more next week at the work session and see if I can come up with a, I mean, the weighted average month to date cost for jail has remained amazingly consistent. And so basically you take that figure and plug 30% into it, should, should have a pretty good handle on if things continue in their same vein where we're going to be. But I have no complaints about, I don't know how to tell my phone not to tell me it's hot. But everybody's working well together. I, you know, we, like I said, we tried to include the police, need a kind of settlement agreement and things are rolling along.
I have a question for you. We, we had a couple of months ago, an incident where the marshal service came and asked the police department to serve a warrant. We picked up the guy. There was an ordeal associated with that, but eventually we took the guy to the county jail to be detained. Who paid for that?
Marshal Service.
Marshal Service.
If it's, if it's a misdemeanor and it's our charge, he's our prisoner.
Yeah, it wasn't.
Okay. We don't pay for that.
It was a felony warrant, wasn't it?
We don't pay for that. I think they do that, Chief can answer this, I think they do that kind of all hands on deck, kind of a more safety if there's more, more cops there. So, no, we don't, if, if he's our prisoner, he's on our warrant and we cannot get him bonded out, then we pay that. Sometimes there's not much you can do about it. But a more common scenario than that is somebody will be in jail on a county warrant and they'll roll off that county warrant and then all of a sudden we get a notice, this guy, you got to hold on him. We got to hold on him as of, you know, August 15th. We have to decide if we're going to hold him, if we have a warrant, we don't really have any option but to hold him. And then the magistrate's got 42 hours to go see that prisoner and she has to make a determination within, excuse me, 48 hours. They have to make a determination to let him go or let him stay and there's a lot of different things that you weigh into that. But about 48 hour here, they can do that by Zoom or they can do that in person. We do a lot of them in person. But either the magistrates or I can do that and I have the magistrate go jail and see prisoners. I don't want to do that. So, but that's just, that's just more commonly how that happens. State prisoners, if somebody's on a state charge and they're in jail, they're rarely going to roll over us, rarely. But most likely it was a county charge and they go to district court and they get the district court charge taken care of and all of a sudden boom, we get this notice that you have a prisoner. What do you want to do with it? Typically if he's a warrant for us, he hadn't appeared in court or hadn't made a payment or there's some other issue that he had to deal with properly, appropriately. And we have to, we have to determine whether we're going to hold him or let him go. And we've tried to minimize, like I said, we've tried to minimize those days. It's sometimes very hard to do because we continue to have a massive problem of people not showing up and just the age old problem of people not doing what they're supposed to do. And I know that's just shocking to somebody, but there's an awful lot of folks that just don't do what they're supposed to do and that will continue. Nothing we can do about it, but anyway.
Any other questions for the judge?
Well, thank you, sir. Appreciate that. Public works.
Sir, everything's running fine right now. We're staying busy with all this storm we've been having picking up brush, but at least every other day, stuff we've, we've hired a morning shift driver for the trolley instead of he started Monday. His name is Lee Pennington and stuff. He'll start doing the morning shift and everything. He'll run from eight o'clock to 12 every day and then wanted to come in and runs from one to four thirty every day. We hired him, went into street department to be equipment operator. He got Class A CDL license and stuff. He started Monday. He's already retired on State Drive. I see he's going to work the time he can work and stuff, but he can drive, he can drive trucks when they'd see that. He can operate the brush truck, don't mind cutting grass. He's older generally, he's 58 and stuff.
He's just a kid.
Same guy, he's going to work out fine and stuff. He's pretty, he's level headed, knows what to do. So he worked for the city of Clear and Wilton. Other than that, we're just working on the budget. Shane Merrill, something I did put on there, didn't find on Shane Merrill, did get the scoop to the old, the old school house building, tore it down on 47 South and cleaned it. And I think he told Charlene he's planning on tearing the rest of them down next week. We had on there a bait list of two out on that some walk the road in Wood Lane right there than the one on 47 up here.
He's going to need jungle equipment to get to the one on 47.
That should have all the stuff we have on list gone.
Anything else?
That's it.
Okay. Anything for Alan?
From District One, we want to thank you. We want to thank you.
That's fine.
All right, board reports. You get anything from the water board, Alan?
No, we just had regular business.
I know the planning commission probably met a half dozen times.
We only met one time. You only do it? Oh, that's right, you weren't there. Um, let's see, we had a pre zoning application from 670 LLC, which is that, careless. So we've done this before where he's going to annex property into the city, but we're going to annex and then rezonate at the same time. So that's why it's called a prezone. That application was approved. So Planning and Zoning will do the public hearing September 14th. It'll come to council October 14th. We'll do the annexation first and then if it's annexed in, then council will vote on the zoning. There was a couple of items that we had on discussion, but we had to defer two of those to Bill Justice and I don't know if they've gotten answers back on that yet. And then once Zach gets his property annexed and rezoned into the city, he had brought a preliminary subdivision request to divide those parcels out and that'll go through Planning and Zoning in November, once everything else is done. That's all I can.
Can you share what the issues were you needed the legal opinions on?
John Lawley was asking about some driveway access on 343, which is Amos Mitchell Road. And because they go out on, well, the problem is, is it a county road? Is it a whatever, you know? So because if it's a county road, they have to get permission or a permit from the county to do the driveway access. And then Nancy Davis across the street has a building for sale. It's actually two businesses, but it has one roof. And she wanted to subdivide those to two so she could sell them separately, but everybody thinks because there's one roof, it's one building, so it couldn't be subdivided. So they were, Ryan and Dale, I think, were going to talk to Bill Justice about both of those issues.
And it's connected in the middle with one wall, right?
Yes.
Yeah, but I'm not even sure it's a firewall.
It's not, I think it's just a, that's what we're talking about.
Yeah, the same water too.
So the issue of the driveway off of Amos Mitchell came up at least a year and a half ago or whenever we approved all the stuff for Saddlewood Trails. And what, in order, if they're going to make that a regular road, as I understand it, they have to have a turn lane, basically going into the subdivision. Deceleration lane is what ALDOT calls it, I think. And they believe that the county requirements are too stringent for that. I'm not sure if that's the case or not. I think it's more, it has to meet ALDOT standards and that's what, what we would require too. And so they had asked us to take, not using the correct term, but to basically take ownership of, to accept right to maintain Amos Mitchell Road. And what we wanted to do is just take that piece from the county that's, that's paved and improved, which goes only a couple of blocks or so. I'm not sure it's not very long, but the county says it's all or nothing. So we'd have to take all that other stuff. And so we chose not to do, to accept that road. And because of that, High Point, as they were developing the property, said, okay, we won't have a road going out there. We'll just have a cul-de-sac. But to me, if they're just doing a temporary like construction interest, entrance, I'm not sure that they'll require.
These are the, I think it was only two houses and they were the bigger lots in the front that would actually come on Amos Mitchell. So they would have to have two separate driveway permits and it has something.
So the homes would actually replace Amos Mitchell?
Or the driveways would. Oh, the driveways would come out.
County road, county road, they come back, Scott just said that Amos Mitchell's got a 40 foot right away from the center line. County's going to measure over to the edge of their right away and you got to have sight distance, it's either three or 400 feet either direction. It's pretty, they're pretty tough.
And there was, there was something about the, the right away length or width or whatever was, that John was talking about. So they weren't all working on it.
Well, it's over my head, but I do, you know, we crossed a similar bridge a year and a half, two years ago. Okay, anything else? Any other, any questions for planning commission?
Okay, so we're going to review our fiscal year 2022 audit. And as we know from our last council meeting, you know, the mayor has to get an audit done once a year and then I'm supposed to present that audit to the city council at the first meeting after the audit is finalized and complete. And that's what this meeting is. And it's supposed to do it by written report and under oath. And so my written report, and there's nothing in the statute that describes what that written report should be, but so my written report is my letter of transmittal, the actual audit report itself, and really the management discussion and analysis, which, which I drafted and it got into the, as part of the audit report is really what my report is. And I'm going to summarize that real quick here and kind of go through it. So the highlights of the audit is that we completed 2022 with a net position of $18,281,633. That's basically our, the city's net worth. That was an increase of $94,000 over FY '21. Now, the net position and also the balance of our government funds is impacted by an unrealized investment loss of $707,000. And I believe that's for the bonds from the proceeds from the sale of the gas company are invested in there. And they, and they're restricted to certain types of bonds that they can be invested in. And as we know, interest rates were low for a very, very long time. Now they've gone up, so the yield on those bonds have gone down. This is a paper loss. This is just 700, and frankly, we lost a couple hundred thousand dollars last 2021 as well. So in two years, the value of those bonds have decreased about a million dollars. So not sure what we can do about that, but that's something that we should take a look at. Long-term liabilities, which is, I guess is a good thing, decreased by $282,000. That's obviously we paid down some of our outstanding long-term debt. And our revenue from recurring taxes has increased, so that's a good thing. And just as a side note, we looked at the ABC taxes and those have really skyrocketed in the past year or so. We're having a good time anyway. So this is in the MDNA. It's called a condensed statement of net position. And I know it's hard to read, but all this is going to do is regurgitate what I just told you. In FY '22, we had a net position of about $18.3 million. That's an increase of $94,000 over the previous year. And again, talks about the unrealized loss down here. So again, if we'd have that $707,000, you know, we would have seen a nice, you know, much better improvement there. Oh, well, how did it do that? What happened here? This is the condensed statement of activities, which is essentially kind of like an income statement, but it's got our expenses. Basically, our revenues exceeded our expenses by again, that $94,000, which was our increase in our net position. So it's pretty much expenses and revenues were awash. And year-over-year revenue, expense and net surplus has been relatively constant for several years here. Changing capital assets in 2022, so the net of the capital assets is about 23, call it 24 million dollars there. That's an increase of $1.2 million. That's mainly the land values from sewer projects, construction in progress, increase in land values is what drove that. This is our debt. We've got $14.6 million in debt. Our debt service in 2022 was $734,000. This is just a GWIS number. That represents about 17% of our recurring general fund taxes and fees. There is, we've talked about this before, there is no real hard and fast rule about how much debt is too much debt, but I have obviously some concerns and would like to see this, this number go down right here. We also have tax abatement commitments for Taco Bell and Columbiana Square. The outstanding value of those is maximum is $473,000. The, the, one of them is seven years and the other one's 10 years. I can't, I can't remember which one. So it's, you, you reach the, the total value, which, which what's left that hasn't been paid is the $473,000 or you reach that time period, whichever comes first. And at the rate that we're paying them, we should probably only see about half of that right there that we would actually have to pay out because their tax revenues haven't been what they anticipated. So consequently, our rebate should be lower as a result of that fact. Now, if their tax revenues go up, then, you know, we still will have to book that liability either way. And then going forward, it's not included on here. As you know, we agreed to do the state revolving fund loan for the sewer project. That's about $2.7 million. Don't expect us to start drawing anything for that until at the earliest, late fiscal year '24, maybe even '25, but there is going to be a future liability associated with our debt service payments associated with that. And this is the letter of transmittal that you can't read because the print's too small. And so it has my sworn statement at the bottom. It says, "I declare that to the best of my knowledge and belief, the information included in the fiscal year 2022 audit report and management discussion and analysis regarding Columbiana's books and accounts is true, complete and fairly present in all material respects the financial condition of the city." And so you all have a copy of that. So now, for more information, Wayne Barber's here, also got John Deloche, didn't realize John was coming from Deloche Barber and Casper's PC. They are the accountants who prepared our financial statements and conducted our audit. And I'm going to turn it over to you and then afterwards, any questions? But before you start, you guys got any questions for me?
No.
Okay.
Thank you, Mayor. So the mayor invited me to come present the audit report to you. He said I had about two or three hours thoroughly go through this information.
Yep. Well, that's a typo, it's minutes.
That joke just never goes over. I bring up that joke though for a purpose because if you look at this financial statement, it's 88 pages long. It is culmination of a full year's work of your accounting department and about three months worth of work on our part. So it is something that I could easily talk to you about for a long, long time. As we had a preliminary meeting today and it took about two hours and I still didn't get to say everything I wanted to say, there's just always, always more. So the mayor has done a really great job going over the Indiana with you, primarily what the Indiana's purpose is, is to summarize what's in the financial statements. It's supposed to simplify. So if you don't really understand financials, if you take that, it kind of takes the bare bones approach and says, okay, if you don't really understand anything else in the financial themselves, here's some basic important data to note, like changing cash, changing fixed assets. So, you know, if you're not a financial person, spend some time in Indiana because that's much easier to understand. One reason to say that is governments are a little bit weird. You have two sets of financial statements. There's no industry in the world that I'm aware of that have to present two separate financial statements. You actually have two balance sheets, two income statements. And they have different names in the government world, but that equates to what could be your business. And so we're going to talk a little bit about why you had the two, what the difference is. Oftentimes I get the question, you know, does that mean we have two sets of books? No, you don't have two sets of books. You choose one of those two methods to keep your books on and then we help you convert from that method to the other method. It's just, it really comes down to one method of accounting being close to how business do it, that full accrual that follows the GASB standards. And then the other one's what they call modified accrual, which is very close to cash basis. The thing about the prime, one of the biggest differences is you buy this building, you spend $13 million on this building, well, under the government-wide method, just like a business would, you're going, it's going to be here for 30 years. So you depreciate it. You recognize that it's an asset, depreciate it over the next 30 years, or in a small portion each year. Under the modified accrual method, you're going to write out the whole $13 million building in the first year. So obviously you can see there's a huge difference between these two methods of accounting. I delivered Chelsea's here pretty recently and they had a $26 million difference between the bottom line of one method versus the other method. So oftentimes I get, Wayne, which one is, is the right one? Well, unfortunately for governments, they're both right. You know, that's, I don't write the standards. I don't like it any more than probably you do or the press does or the public does, but that's, you know, what they've told us we have to do and follow. So that's why they are currently looking at this model. Hopefully they're going to put out a new standard in the next few years and maybe they'll do away with the fund basis, kind of do away with the modified accrual because everybody knows that you should, you get 30 years worth of life out of this building. So if you would flip to, if you've got your audit reports there in front of you, flip to the first page after the table of contents. I'll talk about the audit, intent audit report. Hopefully this three pages right here are what you hired our firm to do. It's putting an opinion on your financial statements. It's going to tell the readers, the bankers, the insurance people, your loan, your people, the bondholders and the public whether you complied with the standards. Now, I'll see a lot of different questions on what type of audits are there because this is the state of Alabama, you're only required to do what's called a financial audit. There's a lot of difference between that and other types of audits. So the next, I kind of think of most of the building blocks. So this is kind of the base. The next level up would be an audit in accordance with Yellow Book standards, the government auditing standards. It's kind of, it's pretty much exactly like this, except for we put an opinion in there about whether you comply with laws and regulations. State of Alabama currently doesn't require that. They came out about a year and a half ago and tried to force it on everybody. Well, they did that and there was a huge, huge uproar because they announced it like two months before the year end. And in order to do the Yellow Book type audit, you have to have met certain CPE standards, have peer reviews, a lot of different things you have to do as a firm to be able to do those type audits. And a lot of people, a lot of CPAs out there doing these type audits for cities in Alabama don't have those qualifications because they've never been required to get those qualifications. So big huge uproar. It was out for about two weeks and then all of a sudden they retracted and came back and said, well, we recommend that you do this. I personally think it will be about, probably within the next year or so, they'll pass a law, but they found out that's the reason they had to retract because they found out they didn't have the authority to just open and change it. So I think that will be filed coming out that you must report it on the, at the Yellow Books level. Above and beyond that, there's what's called a single audit. Basically that means if you received over $750,000 in federal funding, we go a step further, which is a very good chance the next year y'all will have that. And if you reach that level, then you have all three levels. So it's a tiered building of structure. So we'll have to do procedures specifically on your major programs, report to the federal government, tell them, you know, exactly any findings we have, we test compliance items with those major programs. There's a matrix on these programs, they'll tell us specific which items we have to test. So it gets a lot more involved. And then there's also, like a lot of times in a regular audit, you might come across some indication there might be fraud. If you have that, then you have a forensic audit. So those are, a lot of people think their financial auditor is going in there, you know, looking, performing a fraud audit and that's not the truth, you know? As part of our process, we're trying to make sure your material, your financial statements are not materially misstated, whether due to error or fraud. So we're certainly trying to make sure they're, you know, they're right. But the problem with fraud is that typically people are trying to deceive, you know, we're, for instance, we go out and say, hey, I need an invoice, you know, to support this documentation. As a financial auditor, we're allowed to rely on that document. A forensic will do a whole lot of work on that document to see, you know, is it, I've had some training as a CFE, so I kind of know what the process, what they do, especially you know, looking detailed in that invoice, is it, where's it going to, is it going to PO box? They'll look in, you know, research how's incorporated, a whole lot more process and different things they would do if you had a forensic audit. So that's the one way to go about, try to tell you what this opinion is about. If you take this report here and you compare it to last year's report, it's changed. They love changing things around. In this case, I think, you know, what they did was, was appropriate. So what they, the primary thing they did is they moved the opinion paragraph into the very front of the report. Prior, if you go back to the year before, it's up on the third page. So like I said, since this is what you hired us to do, this is what's most important to you. So go read the second paragraph. It says, "In our opinion, the financial statements referred to above present fairly in all material respects." It goes on for three lines of naming all the different types of financial statements. And the last line says, "In accordance with county principles, GAN, except United States of America." And so what that's telling your reader is that you have followed the standards. You don't have an except for opinion, you don't have a disclaimer or worst case scenario, you don't have an adverse. It means you followed the rules, it means your inventory is correctly stated. As the mayor talked about the fair market value of your investments, we'll talk about that some time later, you're following all the rules. There was however, one issue that came up, we talked to Mayor Charlene about it. During this past year, y'all passed a resolution to give retirees health insurance benefits. And that's called post-employment benefits. The, the GASB is huge on making sure all your liabilities on the books. So think about it, if you've got people who are, you know, not retired today, but they could be retired in 20 years from now, they're kind of earning those benefits as they go. So GASB would ultimately like you to be booking that liability as it's earned. So that's one thing, you don't have the books because you just passed it, I just found out about it, however, I didn't do an except for opinion. The reason being is because at this point, I'm pretty sure it's immaterial. The only way to know that for a hundred percent for sure, I passed on the, when you have that, you have to have a study done every two years. It's going to cost the city around $5,000 to $7,500 to have that study performed. I have several clients that do that and they'll come back and report similar to the pension plan. You've got 15 pages of notes in the pension plan. If this comes back as material, you're going to have 15 more pages of notes on the post-employment benefits. It's pretty complicated because what they'll do It's pretty complicated, because what they'll do is an actuary study, they'll project those retiree benefits out for the next thirty, forty years, and it'll come back with liability, it's unfunded, so you're going to have a lot of the only books that's going to reduce your net worth as a city. However, it's not something you're paying today, it's just kind of a, every year, you'll amortize it some, recognizing portion of that based off the actuary study. I don't, right now, you currently have one retiree, we talked about it, you don't have any retirees, anybody close to retiring in the next few years. So at this point, I don't think it's, it's material. So I think it'll come back and we, you know, it's no big deal, we keep on going. If by some chance it does come back and it's material, we'll have to restate this report, which is not that difficult, we just pull it back and then book that liability and then reissue it. But like I said, I'm pretty confident it's going to come back immaterial. At the bottom there's responsibility to management, as the city council, you're included in that. So that might be something you might definitely want to read some point. And then it goes on, you get a little paragraph, I get a whole page worth of responsibilities on the next page. And then the last page talks about requiring some information and additional supplemental Any questions on the ten? Then you're going to get a bunch of pages on the Indiana A, which the mayor has already talked about. Now, I can kind of spend the next thirty minutes to now, we're talking about the numbers. The mayor is trying to kind of put them in a condensed fashion for you. I know you haven't had a financial answer for a long, long time, hopefully over the weekend, you had a chance to live and look at them. Is there a particular area you'd like me to talk about, or any questions you want me to answer related to the numbers? You know, there's twenty, there's forty pages of notes in there, there's the two sets of financial statements. If you will, turn the page. Nineteen, I'll at least explain the two sets of financial statements to you and how to get from one to the other. Okay, so where are the two sets of financial statements coming in? Does not involve all your activities. For instance, the sewer fund, the sewer fund is what's called proprietary fund. So it doesn't have governmental wide and, and modified fund basis, because it operates for profit, it's all full accrual. So this is just talking about your governmental activities, how you get from one to the other. So if you try to compare this to the mayor's number earlier, it's the governmental activities column, not the sewer fund, so it wouldn't be in the total column. But it's going to show the net worth of the city on one method at the top, at six million dollars. The net worth of the city at the other method at the bottom, twelve million dollars. And I've already mentioned, you know, what drives those huge differences. It's fixed assets and it's debt, are the primary two differences. You know, under fund basis, being close to cash, they consider if you're borrowing money, it's a financing source, you have it available to use. So it's actually kind of recognized as if it's revenue. We all know you have to pay it back, so it's not really revenue, but that's how it's treated under that method. So that's what can distort the fund basis from sometimes, if you're borrowing eight million dollars, now all of a sudden, you've got a profit of eight million dollars this year, you're going to have a seven million dollar loss the next year, because you spent all the money. So that's why, as the auditor, I mainly talk about the governmental wide, because it makes more sense, that's how business is. The fund basis are, there's a lot of old accountants just couldn't let it go, and so that's why we still have it. Still, turn the page. Twenty-two. Okay, this will talk about the two income statements and the difference between the two. And again, this is just the governmental activities, not the whole thing combined. So at the top, you had a million dollar loss under the fund basis, and a five hundred twelve thousand dollar loss on the governmental wide activities. Primary difference is depreciation, how much you've bought in capital expenditures. One of the things the mayor had mentioned, your loss is being driven by your investments. They dropped significantly this past year. You spent a good bit of time talking about that and talking about why. And what can you do about it? Back when the gas system was sold in two thousand and one, there was a resolution passed to restrict the money for the, for thirty years. So September two thousand and thirty-one will be the first time it becomes available. So what they're invested in is governmental bonds. So when interest rates are high, you're not going to get quite through the yield on them when, when it's lower. So initially, when y'all sold the money, you invested two million nine hundred seventy-five thousand dollars. That investment account at the end of twenty-two was valued at two million four hundred fifty-eight thousand dollars. So you see, it's less than, about five hundred thousand dollars less than your initial investment. Now, is that a bad thing? Well, it shouldn't be. As long as you hold those bonds to maturity, they're guaranteed that you'll get your principal back. So, so, so it's only a bad thing if somehow you were forced tomorrow to go sell them, because if you've got to sell them tomorrow on the market, they're not worth what the initial cost was. So that's the great thing, is as long as you hold them, they'll, that value will come back. Now, the bad side of that is, is they're usually twenty to thirty-year bonds. So even though this money's restricted to twenty thirty-one, some of those bonds, how they bought them, have just now renewed, and never renewed for another twenty, thirty-year period. So some of them, you can't, you can't use it until twenty fifty, twenty fifty-one is when they're listed. So even if it becomes unrestricted at twenty thirty-one, it may be another twenty years before you really want to take that money out. You have forty pages of notes there, talking about the debt, the mayor showed you the recap on the debt. You've got the notes that's closed, I've tened fifteen pages about pension lien, I could continue talking for probably minutes to an hour on this stuff. Mainly, I just want to make sure any questions you had were answered, instead of just hearing myself talk. And when the, my live stream as well, and somebody commented, hey, this guy sure looks like he hears self-talk, so. So I try to avoid that. But it is a passion, I know we do a lot of work in these things, so I like for people to hear about it and understand it.
I would like to say that I always appreciate Wayne putting up with the dozens of phone calls and multiple dozens of probably dumb questions to try to make sure that I understand this. And I'm getting to the point where I'm almost dangerous, so, because, you know, you spend thirty years trying to figure out how to do battle with the CFO, and then you get in the government side of things, and they flip it all around, it's different, so.
Yeah, you're very good at what you do, both of you. I do have a question, you mentioned the new guidelines and stuff that come out. If they're talking about it, they're going to make new laws about it. So do you think all these cities are going to get sticker shot with those new guidelines come out in terms of when they start having to report to the government and?
Um, as long as it stays, stays at the Yellow Book level, they don't go to the single audit level, it shouldn't be that much more in expenses, because the work for it to do that...
I'm talking about just like findings alone and stuff, to where they're digging more...
Right. Well, yes, that could absolutely be sticker shot, because their, their management letter they're used to getting, actually goes into their report.
Yep.
So now the public's going to see it, the problems you have. And we've had that conversation with several of our clients, I said, listen, if there's anything in this management letter you don't like, we need to work on it, make sure it gets better, because otherwise, it's going in here for everybody to see.
Well, if I understand it correctly, they walked it back through the legislature in the municipal Audit Clarification Act. And my sense is, it might be a while before the legislature has the stomach to change it again. And the other thing that I suspect that they'll do, just like they have changed the rules for requiring an audit by, you know, what the budgets of a city are. So if your budget is X, then you have to do this, if it's Y, you have to do that. And so there may be some variability based upon the size of a city's budget, but my opinion, and I could certainly be wrong, is that the legislature's going to resist changing it for a while.
Yeah, but you figure all these audits that you're doing, pretty much they stay consistent year over year. I mean, if there's a bubble, if there's a ripple of water, it's a big one, probably. But I'm thinking, if you add those additional guidelines to it, and people are used to getting their same traditional audit, and additional findings come out, I think that, yeah, that's what...
Well, the findings should still be the same.
Yeah.
Now it's just out there for everybody to see.
Okay.
Which from an audit standpoint, I love, I wish it was that way anyway.
Yeah.
It is that way in Florida, it is that way in Georgia, I think, I believe it's that way in Tennessee, so I think those in this city are the only do that don't require that one.
So really just want to enhance the visibility of the report.
And as an auditor, I think, you know, people seeing it and saying, hey, Wayne, can you fix this? It's a good thing, it makes the issue get resolved quicker.
Yeah.
As far as the cost of the audit, it shouldn't be, it shouldn't be much different. We're already fulfilling those procedures, it's just kind of writing a new report, just changing the report some.
Okay.
Any more questions on the numbers? If not, we got one more thing to talk about, which would be the management letter and the issues you were talking about, you should have a separate letter there. And so last year, when we were talking with the mayor, you, he had some concerns about some of the writing, the findings we had. And to be honest with you, those findings have been carrying over quite a long time, and nobody had ever kind of, like you were just saying, the way it really looked at him real hard, said, hey, can we do something about this? So he brought them up. So I also, myself, I got a lot of clients that never want to fix those items, so maybe I became a little place myself. So I looked and said, well, I need to go back and look at these and make sure that I have the, the authority and to make sure that I should be writing you up with issues. So if you compare this management letter to the last management letter, it's shorter. I took some things out, primarily because of materiality issues. Shouldn't write you up in a, in this report, especially if it went into the audit itself, if it not stood to cause me a financial statement to be stated materially.
Right.
For instance, you know, y'all've got some lack of segregation dues to the library and the cemetery. Okay, but if you take the total revenues in both of those combined, if somebody were to steal the money for the entire year, it still wouldn't be in materiality or financial statements, probably. So that didn't take away that it is still an area you need to work on. However, maybe there's more important things to focus on first, that would be material financial statements. The biggest thing we took out was, me and Charlene sat down together and we went area by area considering your control processes in regards to segregation of dues. Because it's been in quite a while, that was another type of audit I mentioned, we don't do an audit of your internal controls. We have to gain an understanding of your internal controls in order to plan the audit, and we don't test those controls. For example, you know, if you have a process to take in your tax revenue from the state of Alabama, okay, I kind of got to know what that process is, but I consider the confirmation the state of Alabama says you've got ten thousand dollars. Okay, I got the confirmation, and look, GL, they match, I'm done. Okay, if I had to test internal controls, that wouldn't be sufficient. I had to go say, okay, yes, it worked, but did it work because of controls? We'd have to do a whole lot more testing. That is the type of audit you can have performed. Very few people do that, and it's very costly, much more involved, and it's not required to state out on again, it's a whole separate type of engagement. You know, in the for-profit world, if you're in SOX or something like that, you know, that's part of the audit, they require that for SOX companies, SEC companies. They also, at SEC, you know, they have a whole lot more stricter regulations, they require auditor rotation, they got, you know, you can't prepare your financial statements like we do at that level, so, you know, a lot more at risk for that type of companies. So what we do have in your, in the findings is, on number one, says material audit adjustments. At first glance, somebody sees that word material and they think, okay, this is going to make a profit. Yes and no. Okay, so the majority of the audit adjustments we make for you have to do with converting your books from cash basis to that modified accrual I talked about. That's how you keep your books on fund basis. So what we're doing is we're booking your accounts receivable primarily. Y'all do book some of your payables, typically they have a cutoff date, so we'll look out to that date, see if there's any additional new books, we book some payables, we make adjustments for pre-pays, accrued salaries, accrued compensated absences. So there are things that you don't do in your normal monthly accounting closing process. It is things that y'all could do. And if you want this to go away, we can talk about ways, you know, to, when working with Charlene, the teacher had to do some of this stuff, and decide if it's, the adjustments we make, and if it's worth the time to, to make that adjustment. The only real adjustment we have that I consider, hey, this is, we need to do better at this, you see the description there about the adjustments on the bond account? There are a few bond activities, especially when you issue debt, or, you know, you've got the, the bond trustee fees, it's, it's a little complicated, going into the significant efficiencies and non-compliance area, which says, these are the things that could, and we're writing you up for using us as people to prepare your financial statements, they make us do this. If you use us, if you don't have someone else staff, and you don't write this document and give it to us when we walk through the door, that is an automatic finding, I don't have a choice but to put it in. Because in a perfect ideal world, they want you to be able to prepare your own financial statements, and they want you to rely on us to do it. However, we don't live in a perfect world. I don't have any clients that do prepare their own financial statements. I think there's things that you can do to definitely get there and help with that process. I think we talked about this, providing Charlene with some more training, especially about the change in Gatsby standards. For instance, this past year, there were five new standards. One of them was the lease standard, which really changes the financial statements, very complicated. And this is the twenty-three period, there's one's called SBITA, oh, SPTA standard. And it's talking about subscription-based information technology. And basically, if you lease a computer or software, or, you know, rights to use some type of information-based thing, it's pretty much following along the lines of the lease standard, it says, hey, you may have been paying five thousand dollars a month before, and now we're going to recognize this thing, kind of like that pension stuff, we want you to put that full liability on the book, want you to calculate the present value of a dollar on it, amortize it over the life of that lease, look at it and see if that lease may be renewed. It's complicated. With that two standards, it doesn't complicate. Anybody who's not familiar with, with those two standards would struggle with trying to report those journal entries. Now, the good news is, if you keep in your books on the fund basis, you don't have to report those, because those don't impact the fund basis. So it only would impact the conversion to the full group. And that's where, you know, Charlene is very capable of recording all your transactions for fund, it's the full accrual size she had to train her. For one, you'd have to look at buying new software, because you'd have to take your fund basis numbers, and this is what we do, we have the audit software, put in the fund basis number, and then we make journal entries. In your case, if you wanted both sets of financial statements every month, you'd have to do that monthly, every, every month, or we do it once a year. So you'd have to create both sets of those financial statements by making those entries every, every month or year. So it kind of comes down to, I've been asked, you know, should we make those corrections? As we talked about, as an auditor, I would love for you to do that. It's going to take, save me a whole lot of time if I walk through here and hand that document, it's going to save the city a whole lot of money, probably about twenty thousand dollars less. However, it's a cost versus benefit analysis type thing, how much is it going to cost you to save you that twenty thousand dollars? If you want to prepare your own financial statement, it's going to take some, definitely some law training, it's going to definitely take some new software, you know, possibly, new personnel, many CPAs, taking those, the mayor and I have gone back in special and I've been really required to have CPA, no, you're not required to have CPA, but you're going to need somebody who's been trained in all those Gatsby standards to do it, otherwise they wouldn't, they wouldn't begin to make those adjustments. And then you'll notice that's one page, last time's management letter was three pages. There was also a whole section there of recommendations, that was never findings for the city, that was the thing that we went, we do twenty of these things, and we see the same thing over and over with different cities. So there still are some things in there we recommend you do, like certain written policies in areas you may not have, having a monitoring system that you got to have, having a sign that says, make sure you're, you get a receipt when you walk through at the door, those type of things, we see a lot of that in various cities, but that's not required to be in this report. And since, you know, we seem to have some kind of discussion about this report from last year, I felt like I only need to write you up for things, I said, yeah, this is what needs to be fixed. Questions or comments, or?
I think you answered my question on the, you mentioned the significant deficiency where you had to put, you have to put that in there.
Yes.
So have you ever run across a deal where, like, say, for example, in my line of work, we get an audit, and it's a, it's a repeat finding every year? Say, for instance, a, you know, a long construction process, or a long fulfillment process, or whatever, and every year, it's that same finding. Everybody knows it's going to come out, everybody knows it's going to be in that report. There are times when the, the business group just accepts that risk, and they document and say, hey, we're fully aware of this, we know it's going to come up every year, and we accept this risk. Now, it is not as easy as just being verbal, and obviously, they have to write some type Now, it is not as easy as just being verbal, and obviously they have to write some type of business analysis, say, this is why we accept this risk. Does that, does that work in government accounting and this type of?
You can, any finding we have in there, you can always respond with a management's response.
Okay.
We can make those comments saying, hey, we're aware of this, it's been here a while. We just had done that cost versus benefit analysis and decided that it's not beneficial that we're just going to live with the way it is currently.
Yeah.
And some of it that's kind of in there, it talks about in that second paragraph, it says, management does employ qualified staff to prepare the monthly cash basis financial statements. We're trying to let the reader know that, hey, you know, this, this is not a huge problem. This is something we, we can work at trying to get better and make it less an issue. But it's going to take some, some funding in order to eliminate it.
Okay. So on the material audit adjustments, I read that earlier, and you may have changed my question on it. So does that mean, like, if, if we put, if the line item, the number is 500, and we put 5,000, and we had to go back here and adjust it, is that what we're talking about here?
No, exactly.
Okay.
Okay, so.
That's fine.
As part of the audit, we go through a calculation of materiality. And with the government, we actually calculated about five different ways. You've got fund basis calculation, you've got the government-wide calculation. And so that materiality helps us say, okay, you guys have total material at the financial statement level, at the account level, at the individual item level. So the individual item will tell us, you know, if I pull office supplies, it's going to tell me which ones I need to look at. Okay, it's going to, below that one, it says, okay, the, the count, if I find, find something that's in the wrong place, like she puts it repairs and it should have been in office supplies or something like that.
Right.
Okay, so that's, that's, you know, for your bottom line, that doesn't affect the bottom line. However, it is in the wrong place, so we'll try to move.
Okay.
So, you know, if it's a hundred dollar item, I'm not going to move it for a hundred dollars, it's not material. So the materiality comes in with, you know, the adjustments I made, is it, across that threshold of materiality, we calculated for audit purposes.
Got it.
And the only one you had that did that was the booking of some of the bond accounts. I really have to look back, maybe it's, maybe it's, well, the account receivable adjusted too.
So it's threshold related, not necessarily, okay. Thank you.
Yes?
Yeah, any questions for Wayne?
Well, thanks, sir.
Thank you, sir.
We appreciate it. All right, so this is the resolution saying that, you know, basically, we've received the audit, but there's another little thing in there, and you've, you've also received the written report with the mayor's. But there is a requirement under the Municipal Audit Accountability Act that basically levies on us as a body, a governing body, that we have to provide a copy of the report to the Department of Examiners of Public Accounts within 60 days essentially of this, this meeting. Wayne and Deloche Barber and Caspers will do that for us, but I felt like that we should probably document through this resolution that we're basically going to ask them to do that for us, and that way we have fulfilled our obligation as a governing body. So that's the purpose of this resolution, that basically says, having received the audit report and the mayor's written report, and that we're going, we also have to spread it across the minutes, but by virtue of the fact that we've been here discussing it and minutes are being taken, that will be done. And that we will forward a copy to the Department of Examiners of Public Accounts. So is there a motion to adopt this resolution?
I'll make that motion.
I'll say.
And why don't we take a roll call for that?
Councilmember Lilly?
Yes.
Mazel.
Yes.
Westen.
Yes.
Yeah.
Yes.
Yes. Okay, so the resolution's passed, and now we have another one. This is the Public Works facility. We are, I think, going to start seeing some progress. Thank you, gentlemen.
Thank you.
On this thing in the coming fiscal year. We have already, you know, acquired the property. We've done some preliminary planning and estimating for it. And we have subsequently led a contract for the labor to, to re-skin and put a new roof on, on the facility. We've done some repairs to the, to the slab foundation. And what this contract is, is the, the estimate for the contract for the repairs is just the labor part of it. This is for the material part of it. And so we had a bid opening last week, and the accepted bid was $90,669. So the purpose of this is to award a contract for this bid to... Who?
Besmer Metal Products.
Okay, so Besmer Metal Products. Are there any questions on this?
No, if that's good news, then I'll make the recommendation we accept Resolution 082304. So we're bidding the Public Works Building for Shell Materials to Besmer Metal Products.
Motion's been made, is there a second?
A second.
All right. Let's go ahead and call this one too.
Councilmember Lilly?
Yes.
Mazel?
Yes.
Westen?
Yes.
Phillip?
Yes.
Marsha?
Yes.
Okay, any other city business that we need to bring up today, this evening? I think Wayne cuts all of our time, huh? Okay, mayor's report, real quick. The, the Chamber of Connections luncheon between the last meeting and this one was excellent. Dr. Stewart was there from the University of Alabama, very interesting presentation. I sat in on a virtual presentation by a DECA about Shelby County's broadband profile and the plans to expand broadband in, in the county and for communities that are underserved, which is us. Eh, I, I was, I'm going to say it didn't tell me anything that was new, and it still puts a, a great deal of responsibility on communities and counties to basically come up with a plan on how to do this. And, and I have found that that's difficult when the broadband providers, if they don't want to invest in a certain area, because they're going to do it where they have, you know, demand for, for the, the most demand and, and the density for that service. But anyway, it was interesting to go through that. As Wayne mentioned last week, we sat down and did a final review for about two hours with Wayne, so we got into a lot of detail on that. And then on Friday, August 11th, Orchestra Partners came down and sat with me to give me an update on where we are with the vision planning and the urban design that they're, they're going through and what the next steps are. I am waiting for some information from them on what they recommend that we need to do in order to help us get an investment fund started. And they're going to, and there's some commitments that the city is going to have to make. So when I see that, as to what that is, I think we're going to have to have the city attorney about it, and then we're going to have to meet as a group and decide, is this something the city wants to do? Also, on Friday afternoon, or Friday evening, the Alabama Kiwanis Convention was held at the 4H Center out on Lay Lake. I was invited to go to this before I was aware of the community pep rally, so we had that commitment. And it was interesting to me. There were representatives from all across the state Kiwanis clubs. There were representatives from other states, and there were also international representatives there. We had a speaker from the Birmingham Fed who was there, so, and he's a Kiwanis member in Homewood. So that was an interesting talk as well. But here's the interesting thing. So the Alabama Kiwanis District, the statewide district, is 100 years old this year. Columbiana's Kiwanis organization is more than 100 years old. It existed before there was a statewide Kiwanis organization. And we're down to three active members, and there's discussion of expanding the organization. The Kiwanis talked to me and said, we don't want you to do that. There's the historical perspective, you guys have been around over 100 years, we'd like to keep that club. And they want to come to Columbiana and have an interest meeting, and, and would like to try to get 15 people who would be interested in continuing this Kiwanis chapter and, and making it a viable organization. I told them I would help them with that. I'm asking for everybody who hears this, as well as the council, for your help with that. And so more information when they tell me, when they're planning on coming, I will follow up with them. And then later this month, the Shelby County Mayor's Associations in Harpersville this quarter. Announcements?
All right, so this Saturday is the Columbiana Main Street Farm's Table Dinner. Public Safety Day is August 26th. September 4th is Labor Day, and then the Shelby County, the Shelby, Discover, Discover Shelby Fest is the third one.
So when, when, so Shelby County helps us to advertise and communicate that.
For the wine festival.
So, so do people understand that it's a wine festival? Because the name doesn't necessarily imply that.
It is, um, yeah. So the, the plan this year is to do, there are already some advertising, some bigger advertising. And I think that we signed up with one of the concessions. It's not Fox, but I think it's 3340.
Okay.
So to do some heavier advertising.
Because that's my understanding, we've got a few more vendors or ventners, maybe that's the, the way to say it, who are going to be here this year, and we'd certainly like to be able to attract more people in the town, so. Okay. Any, any questions for Alan? Okay, comments from anyone?
Got a couple. Four-year discussion, 216 Pine Hill Drive. Chief said that there was progress been made the last time all three of us talked, even with myself. Has not been any progress, and actually, it's actually declined further than has ever been. It's a, there's a guy living in a basement, he hides from most everybody. He's, the best man.
It is 216.
Kindly referred to as drug house.
Yeah, where that's.
Yeah. So he hides out in the basement, there, utility has been shot. So there's trees down, weeds about three foot tall, and various places in New York, trash in New York. It's just a, it's a nuisance, it's a hazard. With a guy living there, although you tell him, Mr. Ponder seems to think he's probably, he's catching water flushing his toilets or just disposing of it in New York. Yeah, that's an issue. It's an ongoing issue. This, this house is housed, I don't know how many drug addicts are. There's been multiple arrests, there's been two arrests since you and I talked, spoke last, which was about three or four weeks ago. Mr. Ponder was woke up 5:30 in the morning. Lady banging on his door, he didn't use his phone because her boyfriend, whatever he was, is bigger. So both of them got arrested. That's, that's all well and fine. It's just, this is a, a place to house criminals. That's all it is. It's all it's ever been. Unfortunately, this house used to belong to a judge. You know, and it's just, it's a nuisance to our community, it's a nuisance to our, our, our street. And frankly, there's not anything being done by it. You know, I know that the city is strapped for funds, or strapped with adequate placing. You know, and I understand all that, but at some point, we have to do something about it. You know, and that's regardless of what I've got going on next door. You know, that's, that's a drop in the bucket compared to what's, what's going to, I mean, there's a guy that stayed in his house, drugged one of our neighbors off her porch and beat her in her front yard. You know, and it took a lot longer than it should have for the police to get Columbiana hurt. Shelby County finally called the guy after he sideswapped another Ikea, 16 years old, threatened his life.
Is this the incident that happened two years ago?
Yeah, but there's, you know, there's been, just, just in this house, there's, and I may be wrong. The number might not be exact, but just in, at this residence, between Columbiana and Shelby County, Shelby County Drug Task Force and the federal marshal, there's probably been 30 arrests in this house, just out of this house. You know, that, that number may not be exact, but it's close.
Over what period of time?
Four or five years. Well, you could go back, you know, 2015, so.
When were these most recent arrests?
The most recent arrests, you could say, three or four weeks ago.
Were you aware?
Maybe a month ago.
So, so what agency did the arrest?
Mr. Ponder did them. I assume Columbiana, but he didn't.
I think the Sheriff's Department was down there after I reported on the council.
So the drug task force?
I don't know who made the arrest. I was, he said it was a female officer, I was, I assumed Columbiana. They're going to, if we're more diligent on the street, we would, you know.
The problem is, and I have said it every time we come, I don't feel like I should be afraid to go out and check my mailbox. And that is during the day. I actually made the mistake of stopping me when I was here at the last meeting, and he and I talked, God bless him, and I gave him an airport. And he rode down the street that evening, he said he was. And I, I don't know, have any of you ridden down that street?
I drive down it frequently.
I can tell by our cameras, you and city council have been on our street patrolling, not when they're called, patrolling twice as often as our police. I can, I can prove that, I can tell you the day and the minute when people come down our street.
But to have vehicles come, we, we watch drug deals how many times. When they come broad daylight and they're swapping drugs and you can see it, and there's cars.
So I'll, I'll, you know, it's been two or three weeks since I, frankly, that I've been down there. But the last time I was there, interestingly, I was pleasantly surprised, 216 was, was cut and clean.
Yeah, when you came by, the grass was cut up, there was, there's still a blue park, there's been a blue park for the roofs since October last year. The front window's been locked down.
I don't know that there's anything we can do about that.
I've been twice since we talked, and I was wanting to check. I went one morning before I went to work, just to say, hey, maybe the lights will come on, but windows were up, grass was.
Let, let me ask Alan a question about the water. So, so you understand that the water utilities have been cut?
Well, I know the power can turn off the water.
Okay. Because aren't there restrictions on being able to cut somebody's water off?
If they're, if they're two months behind, they'll lock it out.
Okay, so even a, a home that's occupied, they'll, they'll allow us to do that?
I'm sure theirs has probably been locked out, unfortunately, there's nothing to say.
Is it a lock on the, on the meter?
Would that be the people that rent it, or would that be the owner of the home, it's like, who, who's the water bill guilty?
Well, it could be either way. It depends upon their legal. Okay, I just was curious.
If there's a, the guy has a.
This is the thing, I might say something. One, I go up and down your street five days a week.
Most of the way probably.
The grass has, has gotten up.
Four foot tall.
She, it's got four foot, but. Somebody who has a tarp on their roof, we don't have anything in our ward that's to cover how somebody keeps their roof. We don't have anything in the ward that's to cover how the siding on our house works. We don't have anything to cover whether they have busted windows or what. We don't have anything that says that you have to have power or you have to have water. Okay? People own the house, who they let come in and out of their house is their business. Okay, when there's issues up there, we try to address the issues. Okay, I don't, I don't know. What else?
I don't know that you come down, I can, I can lotion.
Sure, you go back and look at my driver's white issue lead.
I know exactly what you.
I come up and down your street at least three or five times a week.
So if you come down our street that often, you don't know that there's an arrest made three or four, four weeks ago?
If it was when I was not at work and I haven't seen paperwork come across my desk, then no, I don't know.
I just don't understand how you can have a house that had that many calls made on it. We have, they have been fighting our street, they've been naked in the street fighting. There's been shooting.
I understand.
I don't understand how you can have that many things happening.
I understand, I have a house close to me that, that does the same thing, okay? But these people live in that home. We, as a city, does not have any right to come in and say.
Drug abatement and no soloth.
You can't live here.
Drug abatement and no soloth, look it up, just, just one statement, file paperwork.
Okay.
Drug abate.
To do a drug abatement, there has to be, and I have to go back and look, at least four buys made out of the residence. But it has to be proven that drugs are being sold, thrown in the residence. Purchases have to be made either through a confidential informant or under cover ops.
Let me, if I may, so we understand your concern.
Yes, I would love to get rid of this house as much as anybody else.
For, what, what we need to do is if there are other agencies that have made arrests there, we need to reach out to the drug task force, the sheriff's department, the state, let's try to find out. Let's do some research and see what's been done there. There should be, just like we talked about, the marshal service, you know, who asks for your help to serve a warrant. Normally, if they're going to come and, and make an arrest, I would expect them to ask for support and make Columbiana aware of that.
Typically, they do.
Huh?
Typically, they do.
So, so there's, we, we need to find out if these things are, in fact, have. We need to find out if these things are, in fact, have happened.
Sure.
If they have, and we haven't been aware of it, then we need to figure out how we can collaborate better with them.
Exactly.
I will... I'll take... Let's touch base with the city attorney and find out if there's any other activity that we can do. But I think we might be limited as far as what we can do legally.
I assume we know, I assume we know who owns that house? Is it local?
The Ms. Rains that lives there. Her mother bought that house basically to get them out of her hair and put them in our hair. So, it's owned. It's not a rental house.
But the owner lives there too?
The daughter, the dog.
And I can only...
So, she's still there?
No, I mean, there's just she went and out. They'll be staying for a few minutes.
If they buy them out, I assume they're really good.
There was a van that come in the other night that stayed for a little bit. And they're...
Put the truck all the way through.
But you said they'll pull in the driveway and stay for about forty-five seconds to a minute, and then they're out. Sometimes you may have a brand-new Mercedes that pulls up, stays for a minute, and they leave. Sometimes it's a boot-up car that stays for a minute, and they leave. It's just...
Well, I know, I know we've talked about this for a long time. And I fully acknowledge that.
I had a birthday... We had a birthday. We're reluctant to have anything in our house.
Yeah.
You know, we had a birthday party Saturday.
I mean...
No, we had a birthday party Saturday for our daughter. Every person, we had about twenty people drop off kids or kids tonight. Every single person dropped a kid off at our house Saturday. Every single one of them, that failed. Asked us, "What's going on next door?" And this is not two sixteen, this is house number four. "What's going on next door?" You know, then you go into the... Well, does Columbiana not have city ordinance? They don't, they're just going to the court. And it's just, you know, from that red house to my house to the mayor's house or to Corley's house, as the crow flies, it's not that much of a difference.
So, I'm gonna have to take exception. We do enforce the ordinance. But how we enforce the ordinance is not the way you think it ought to be enforced. So, there's limitations as far as what we can do other than to abate that piece of property. And that's not something that the city's gonna do.
Yeah, and that's the problem I run to. All the city, all the leaders in Shelby County that I've talked to, my biggest problem that I have is I live inside the city limits of Columbiana. That's my problem.
That's the problem.
Because if I didn't live inside the city limits of Columbiana, Shelby County says, "You can't have pool in your front yard." Shelby County says, "You can't pump water off of your property or somebody else's property." Shelby County says a lot of things that Columbiana just will not... That's my biggest problem. So, what you're gonna... I know that you've looked at the recidivity rate of Columbiana, the rate at which people move in and then leave. That's pretty high. And there's a reason for it. People like me is not gonna hang around. We're an exception to the rule because it's extremely convenient for my wife and my daughter. I can... My job, I can live anywhere in the state. I can afford to live anywhere in the state. I chose to live in Columbiana.
And I'm gonna tell you something. And before you ask, no, we didn't call the police because we know what kind of response we're gonna get. Y'all know the response I got the last time I called police for help. But about two Sundays ago, my thirteen-year-old daughter took our dog out. When she was on her way back in, my neighbor flashed her. Full-blown naked, flashed her. My daughter's thirteen.
And you didn't report that?
No. You know why? Because, one, again, y'all know the response I got. Y'all can say what you want to. Number two...
I saw the body cam on...
Number two, I had it.
I saw the body cam. You did get a response.
Number two, yes, we have it on camera. But it's gonna be green because she knows where our cameras are. And we talked about it. And we said, "You know what? They're gonna say, 'Do you have it on camera?'" And Keith talked to the police officer. We mentioned it to him and said, "Here's what happened. What do we need to do if this happens again?" And he said, "Call us immediately, and we'll at least come out and talk to your daughter." But that is the kind of crap that we're dealing with. She come out and flashed my thirteen-year-old daughter. So, y'all can say what you want to. And I know that everybody thinks we're just these horrible, horrible people because we keep complaining about the red house and we keep complaining about this lady next door. Y'all don't know the relationship that we had with her before the incident that started all this mess. We were extremely nice to her. She was nice to us. We had not a bit of problem with her. Her kids came over to our house, out in the yard, and played with our daughter. There was no problem until whatever switch flipped in her mind. But this is the stuff we're dealing with. And he's right. There is not a place in this state that we can't afford to live. We choose to live here. I work in this city. My daughter goes to school in this city. And let me just tell you something. In three years' time, we just started, well, four years counting this school year. If you think I won't pack up and leave out of here and leave y'all with it, you're crazy. And we're not the only people that feel that way. Y'all are gonna lose good citizens. And you're gonna be stuck with people like in the red house and what's next door to us. And what's gonna happen when people like us moves out? You're not gonna have, you're not gonna have decent citizens. You're gonna end up just a defunct city with nobody. Is that really what you want? I realize that you're limited as to what... You can't just go in and tell people, "You gotta do this on your property. You gotta do that." But there are things you can do. There are. You know it, and we know it.
And I've got, I've got three emails hanging right now to the chief that he has not responded to, period. Not even, not even, not even, "I'm working on it. I can't do that." Nothing. No response.
That's a...
I've got...
I don't have any emails from you. Any mail from you, I've responded to.
I'll forward them to you tomorrow.
And all we ask is just help.
June the twentieth was the first one. The last two was just two weeks ago.
I'm not receiving email...
I'll forward them to you later.
The biggest problem is, he's mad because we called him out in front of you and in front of you guys because we didn't tell you to help.
I understand that. I understand it. See, I tried working, you know, this whole thing out. I understand that y'all are in precarious situations. But, you know, enough is enough. I've found needles in my front yard. Corley's found needles in his drainage ditch.
Let me explain them right for you, okay? I don't have anything personal to say against you guys. I'm not mad, okay? But I can't go at somebody else's house and say, "You gotta get out." Okay? We just can't do that, okay? This woman that lives next to you, she cut her grass, okay? And then she put tires in her yard.
Maybe one house in the front yard is not cutting grass. Now, come on.
Her grass needs cutting.
I mean, that's the thing, if it's not consistent...
There's trash on the yard by who?
Nothing that you've done is consistent. Nothing, not one thing you've done has been consistent.
We try to be of these people.
I'm not gonna argue.
I'm not arguing. I'm just telling. Okay, I don't have anything personal to say.
The VHR.
And I wanna do the very best I can for this city. But I can't just go in and start ordering people to get out.
Nobody's asking you to go in with guns or weapons. But if you would go in and say, "These are ordinances," and this is...
Well, can I ask this, please? I think we've gotten the message here. If you guys want to have further discussion outside the council meeting, I don't think it's productive anymore. You know, I have made a suggestion on what we might be able to do relative to two sixteen. We are, myself, the chief, I think Ashley, we're trying to keep an eye on your next-door neighbor's home to make sure that it doesn't get out of control and is in compliance with the ordinance. So, you know, we'll keep trying to do that as best we can. And then...
We don't, I don't wanna come across as, I'm just against help. It's just, you know, four years. It's just, it's frustrating.
I understand. And I don't wanna come across as if we don't wanna do anything. I do think some of the things that you would like for us to do may not be within our power to do. But I'm willing to look into it. That's all I can say.
Look into drug abatement and that's involved. There's a lady in Birmingham, a special one. She... I can get her name for you? Even in Hoover, as big a town as this, she's a forest nuisance law in Hoover. Forest apartment complex has put up lighting because of drug activity in the apartment complex. There's things that you can do.
So, again, it would require us to change our ordinances. And that would be something that, as a council, we would have to decide if we wanna change our nuisance ordinance. And so, we can certainly take that into consideration.[1552.02]